Morning, everyone. Now, I call to order. So. Good morning, everyone. I call to order the March twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-five, Ninety Commission Meeting at nine A.M. We are meeting in the new San Mateo County Board Chambers as well as via Zoom. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Please proceed with roll call.
Commissioner Gupta?
Here.
Commissioner Hanson? Commissioner Ketchum might be joining us on Zoom. Commissioner Ramirez?
Aye, I'm here.
Chair Serrano Quan?
Here.
Thank you, Chair. You have a quorum.
We will now open public comment for items on consent agenda and items not on the agenda. Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Thank you, Chair. I will first call upon members in chambers, followed by speakers on Zoom. For in-person comments, the speaker slips are located in the ante room. On Zoom, please use the raised hand feature or star nine if you are calling by phone. And at this time, Chair, we have no comment for this item. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now close public comment for items not on the agenda and consent agenda. Do we have a motion to set the agenda and approve the consent agenda?
I move.
Second.
Thank you. That was a motion by Commissioner Gupta and a second by Commissioner Ramirez. Commissioner Gupta?
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Aye.
Chair Serrano Quan?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.
We will now move on to item two. Madam Clerk, please introduce the project and the planner.
Owner: Luis Cahoon and the Coastside Land Trust. Applicant: Blue Sky Designs, Inc. File number: PLN twenty-twenty-four dash zero-zero-one-two-four. Location: Nine-Nine-Nine Ocean Boulevard. APN: Zero-three-seven dash two-seven-eight dash zero-eight-zero. And the project planner is Mike Shaller.
Good morning, Commissioner. Morning, Commissioners. Apologies, my allergies are going crazy right now. The project before you today is a request for a coastal development permit to convert a vacant previously developed residential parcel into a neighborhood parklet. Uh, the project site is located at Nine-Nine-Nine Ocean Boulevard in the Seal Cove area of Moss Beach. The project site is bounded by Ocean Boulevard and Bernal Avenue with a public access point for the Pearl Point Bluff County Park across the street. The applicant is proposing to convert the subject parcel to a small neighborhood parklet for passive recreation. Approximately half of the parcel will be covered by decomposed granite with a concrete walkway connecting the rear portion of the parcel with Ocean Boulevard. A pair of circular terraces, approximately two feet in height, will be constructed across, uh, constructed using rough-cut granite boulders. A low-seat wall will be constructed at the top of the second terrace. The remaining portions of the parcel will be planted with native plants, or I'm sorry, native trees, plants, and grasses, including sea notus, coffee berry, and golden cypress. The highest point of the parks, of the parklets' hardscape will be approximately one-hundred-and-sixteen feet above sea level, which contrasts with the previous residence's maximum building height of one-hundred-and-thirty-five feet above sea level. The subject parcel is currently owned by Luis Cahoon, hope I'm saying that right, who is donating the land to the Coastside Land Trust, which will own and maintain the park. The building permit for the demolition of the residence was issued on January seventeen of this year, and demolition has been completed. As discussed in your staff report, staff believes the project, as condition, complies with the policies contained in the county's LCP, particularly with regards to the use of native plantings for landscaping and the preserve, preservation of views from adjacent properties. One policy I did briefly want to touch upon is policy nine-point-eight uh, from the hazards chapter of the LCP. Typically, for projects adjacent to coastal bluffs, a bluff stability report is required. However, given the unique nature of this project, this requirement was waived. But on the recommendation of the Coastal Commission, the standard conditions of approval for projects with coastal hazard implications were placed on the project. And in closing, staff is recommending approval of the requested coastal development permit, county file PLN twenty-twenty-four-one-two-four, by adopting the required findings and conditions of approval contained in attachment A. Are there any questions I can answer for the commission at this time?
I might, just quickly, um, maybe can you comment a little bit on, on some of the correspondence that we received, especially today, this morning?
Uh, so the correspondence, uh, we received correspondence previously, uh, neighbors concerned about the nature of the recreational facilities. Um, this is not to be a, um, a playground. As I mentioned, it's, it's for passive recreation. Regarding the, the comment we received this morning about, um, upkeep and maintenance of the property, that falls upon the product. This is going to be a privately-owned piece of property. Coastside Land Trust will continue to own this property. In fact, our county parks department has stated clearly that they do not intend to, uh, take on responsibility for maintenance of this project. So it will fall entirely upon Coastside Land Trust. Having said that, so they, if there are issues with unauthorized uses, people having parties there, uh, it'll fall upon the responsibility of the neighbors to call the sheriff's department. Just as it would be if, with any other vacant piece of land, uh, that people are doing, um, unapproved activities on.
But ultimately, still, the responsibility is of the owner or the trust.
That is correct.
Got it. Okay, that's it.
Question?
Yes, please.
So is the current, uh, home that's on the property that has already been turned down?
Yes, it was. It was demolished already. They, they, uh, the they pulled a building, they pulled a demolition permit from the building department, and it was demolished in accordance with regulations.
Sorry, I can't hear.
I'm sorry, uh, they pulled a demolition permit from the county building department earlier this year, and the house was demolished and the site, um, cleaned up in accordance with, uh, demolition requirements of the county.
Okay, okay. And, um, and you already clarified that it's going to be a passive, uh,
Yes.
Uh, park, uh, no children's?
Uh, no, yes, no playground equipment, nothing. It's simply intended to be the applicant's desires to have a, a place where people can contemplate, you know, nature and, and the, the views of the ocean.
And, uh, no issues with blocking the view of the ocean?
There shouldn't be. I mean, so if the, the, the house that was previously there obviously stand, stood much taller than any of the proposed lands, um, hardscape. Uh, the trees shouldn't grow any taller than, um, than the house that was there previously.
And the zoning allows?
The R-one zoning does allow for parks, yes.
The other thing that I read is that, uh, there's no, no entry fee of any kind.
This is, yes, that's correct.
It's, it's very generous of Mrs. Cahoon, uh, to donate this land.
I would agree, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Michael.
Okay, thank you.
Does the applicant wish to speak? You have about fifteen minutes.
Does not appear that the applicant's present, Mr. Chair. Um, Angela, anyone on Zoom?
Uh, no, we have, but we have somebody for public comment, but not the applicant.
Thank you. Do we have any question for the applicant from the commission? The applicant is not here, I think so. Uh, thank you, Commissioner, for your questions. We will now open public comment for item number two.
Thank you, Chair. I will first call on Sid Young, which is the only virtual hand raised for this item. Sid, you will have five minutes.
Hi, sorry, I couldn't find the unmute. Um, I, I am a neighbor, and, um, I totally support, um, Luis Cahoon's, um, generous donation. I do wonder, however, um, we do, we are at the foot of the trail for the Gene Lauer Trail, which is San Mateo County Parks, and they are not going to be maintaining this parcel. So we do get a lot of people with dogs, walking their dogs out in Seal Cove, um, not from the area, not from the neighborhood. And sometimes there's leftover doggie bags here, there, and everywhere. But I believe the county parks has a container for it, and I'm wondering if this particular parklet will have a, um, a container for, um, canine feces, and also if, um, there's going to be a regular uh, collection of said container of canine feces. That's all I really want to know. I, maybe if, I don't see that they were going to give us a presentation about maintaining the park from Coastside Land Trust, but I guess that's who we have to call if we notice there's no collection facility or there's a lot of, uh, poop bags being deposited on said property. Maybe you can answer it. I know you guys usually only take public comment, but that is my only concern, really, um, that, that it get turned into an ad hoc dog park. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, Chair, we have no further comment for item two.
Thank you. We'll now close public comment for number two and begin commission discussion on this item. Are there any comments from the commission? If not, we can proceed with the motion.
I would like to hear, uh, staff's comments on the, uh...
Yeah, on the question? Yes, uh, so the question had to do with collection of refuse in particular, um, dog excrement. I think, um, there's likely going to be a garbage can. Nope. Go ahead, Mike.
The, uh, the plans submitted by the applicant do not indicate any type of trash cans or other waste, um, uh, materials, uh, or, I'm sorry, a trash can or the kind of waste collection facility on the site, um...
I, I think that's, um, good enough. I think, you know, the, the users of the park are expected to, uh, pack out what they pack in, if you will. Like, is the case in many of our parks, you're responsible for not littering and cleaning up after yourself. Um, I think if there, this does become a problem. And, you know, oftentimes, the presence of garbage cans might actually attract people to use them and, uh, folks who, in terms of, folks, uh, looking for a place to dispose of their refuse, if they see that there's cans there, it could potentially lead to excessive placement of, um, garbage. So, you know, it, I think it's perhaps debatable whether or not garbage cans would help or actually become somewhat of an attractive nuisance, if you will. Um, so I think if it becomes a problem, what will happen is we'll need to talk to the property manager, in this case, the land trust. And when we do have properties that have problems with, um, garbage and lack of collection, um, the county has some leverage to require the property owner to obtain garbage service. So I think that option's available to the county, should this become a problem.
All right, follow up with a question on that. Can we add a condition that they should, uh, that, that they are responsible for collecting and cleaning up? And probably, uh, you know, adding a garbage can that they are responsible to maintain?
I, I believe the commission would have the discretion to add a condition related to collection of, uh, or proper cleanup and maintenance of the site?
Yes.
Yes, I, I think that is, uh, their responsibility, I believe. Uh, they should be maintaining it since they are going to be taking over, uh, this piece of land and making a parklet out of it?
Yes, there's no question about that. Um, the owner and manager of the property will have the responsibility to comply with property maintenance requirements, and that applies to all property owners throughout the county. Uh, part of our, uh, regulatory scheme includes the International Property Maintenance Code, which requires property owners to maintain their property and, um, dispose of refuse appropriately. So that's, that is a requirement. I think the, if the commission is concerned about the presence of garbage cans actually requiring the, um, owner and manager of the property to obtain garbage service, um, I think that, that would, um, perhaps ensure or address the issues that's been raised.
Yeah, I, I personally like that because, uh, you know, in, in a normal, um, situation where, yes, you know, uh, on a private house, yet the, the owner is responsible to take care of their property. But since this is going to be used by also the public, um, there's a potential that more garbage is going to be, uh, generated or left there. So, um, since the county is not taking responsibility for it, I think we need to make it, uh, uh, put it on the owner to, um, you know, to make sure that they, um, are responsible for it.
I, I believe, um, our planner, Mike Shaller, has a, a condition he'd like to reference regarding this matter.
Well, I, yes, uh, actually, condition number ten in attachment A of your staff report, uh, speaks directly to this. It states, "It shall be the sole responsibility of the property owner to maintain the subject park. Trash and other debris shall be removed on a regular basis. The landscaping and irrigation system shall be maintained to avoid the growth of weeds and other flammable vegetation and to avoid erosion and deposition off-site." So we already, we have that condition of approval in attachment A, uh, right now.
Okay, thank you. I, I didn't see it, I didn't remember it, okay? So it is part of it, all right? Should we proceed to a motion now? Okay. I will move that the planning commission approve the coastal development permit, uh, as per county file number PLN twenty-twenty-four dash zero-zero-one-two-four, by adopting the required findings and conditions of approval contained in attachment A.
I'll second that.
Thank you. That was a motion by Commissioner Ramirez and a second by Commissioner Hanson. Commissioner Gupta?
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Aye.
Chair Serrano Quan?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.
We will now move on to item three. Madam Clerk, please introduce the project and the planner.
Owner: Seahawk Ranch Corporation. Applicant: Chuck Rico. File number: PLN twenty-twenty-three dash zero-zero-zero-eight-eight. Location: One Main Road. APN: Zero-three-seven dash two-seven-eight dash zero-eight-zero. And your project planner is Canola Kelly.
Good morning, Commissioners. Um, it was said, uh, this is, uh, actually PLN, oh wait, uh, twenty-twenty-three, um, zero-zero-eight-eight, uh, One Main Road in North San Gregoria. So it's a coastal development permit and architectural review, um, to allow for, uh, the drilling of an agricultural well to serve, uh, hundred-and-six, eighty-six acre parcel, um... So here it is, One Main Road. Um, you can see it's just west of, uh, Cabrillo Highway. So typically, um, agricultural zones in this area qualify for a, um, an exemption from coastal development permits. This is just outside of the agricultural exclusion area, which is why, uh, they require, uh, a CDP in this instance. Here is a, um, kind of an aerial view of the property, um, with an overlay of the, um, prime soil, um, locations on site. And, and this is kind of the overlay where the approximate location of the wells will be, um, drilled on the site. It's an existing, um, agriculture operation, um, where they, um, graze, uh, farm animals. Um, so all this area is just kind of, um, grassland. Here's a, a typical profile of the, uh, the well. You can see the dimensions and, um, just the, a small portion of the top that will be visible. Um, so as detailed in the staff report, um, the, uh, the project, um, is agricultural in nature. Um, so agriculture is, uh, a, a permitted use in the PAD zone, which is where this is, uh, located. Um, it, it's consistent with architectural and design standards for the scenic corridors. It is in a scenic corridor. Uh, and the visibility from, uh, Cabrillo Highway, um, due to the size, will be very minimal. Um, no vegetation's going to be removed, um, at all. Uh, and it's in compliance with the policies of the, um, general plan and LCP. Um, and it's not in a, you know, area of sensitive habitats, uh, it's supporting agriculture, uh, and won't, uh, impact any visual quality. And it's located out of any kind of buffer zones from, uh, the coastal bluff and, uh, creek. So you can see it's approximately, you know, four-hundred feet from the creek, three-hundred-and-seventy feet from the, the bluff. Um, so for, for Sequa, um, the project is exempt, uh, for, uh, using the fifteen-three-oh-three-E, the construction of new small accessory structures. Um, and again, uh, the project's located in the scenic corridor, but, uh, will not, what not have any visual, kind of, impact. Um, and it's not in an environmentally sensitive area, so it complies with, uh, Sequel guidelines. So, in conclusion, um, the, uh, our recast's recommendation is that the planning commission approve the coastal development permit, uh, an architectural review, uh, permit exemption, county file number, uh, PLN twenty-twenty-three zero-zero-zero-eight-eight, uh, by adopting the required findings and conditions of approval on attachment, uh, A. That concludes my presentation. Any questions or?
Thank you, Canola. Do we have any questions to staff from the commission?
Good presentation, uh, of the report. Uh, I like your interspersing, uh, the pictures in between your, uh, description of the project. It makes it easier to follow. Um, uh, question is that, um, is the owner expanding, uh, their usage of the property? That's why they need extra water?
No, they have an existing well on, oh, not a well, but a, uh, pond on site that just collects surface water, and it's not enough to, especially during the, um, you know, summer months, uh, to water the animals. Um, so they need the, uh, this water as a supplement to that.
Okay. Um, and, uh... So they have chosen, like, one primary site where they are going to be, um, testing out to see if they can get a well and then two alternate ones?
Exactly.
If that doesn't work out, okay? And, uh, what is going to be the duration of the project?
The, uh, well construction?
Right.
Um, it might be a question for the, um, the applicant if they are here.
Oh, oh, are you the owner?
No, I'm not. Uh, my name's Evan. I work for Water Solutions. We're the applicant that filed the coastal development permit on behalf of Seahawk Ranch.
Okay.
Um, so the, the well project typically takes about two weeks, typically.
Okay, okay.
Pardon, can you tell us your name one more time?
Evan Wolf.
Can you, uh, actually touch the mic? I don't think that we're going to be able to get that unless you, yeah, really close to it.
My name's Evan Wolf. I work for Water Solutions. The well duration, uh, project typically takes about two weeks.
Thank you. Okay, um... Okay.
Does the applicant wish to speak?
The applicant's not online.
Thank you, Commissioner, for your questions. Any other questions? We will now open public comment for item number three. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Chair. We don't, we do not have anybody wishing to speak in chambers, and at this time, there are no virtual hands raised on Zoom for item number three. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now close public comment for item three and begin commission discussion on this item. Are there any comments from the commissioner? Now we can proceed with, with a motion, please.
I, I have it ready if you want. Good, please, all right? Um, I move that the planning commission approve the coastal development permit, architectural review permit, ex, ex, uh, except exemption as per county file number PLN twenty-twenty-three dash zero-zero-eight-eight, by adopting the required findings and conditions of approval in attachment A.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Ramirez, second by Commissioner Hanson. Commissioner Gupta?
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Aye.
Chair Serrano Quan?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Please proceed with item four, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, as far as correspondence goes, uh, we have not received any correspondence other than, uh, that which applied to item number two today. Um, so moving on to item five, our next meeting will be on April ninth, um, and we will have a study session. It will be about our long-range planning work program. Um, so this is an annual event that we, uh, do. We present, uh, the proposed work plan and look for, uh, the commissioner's feedback on the, uh, many important projects our long-range planning division will be pursuing in the upcoming year. So I look forward, uh, to that. And then finally, the director's report is, uh, very brief today. The only item I wanted to update you on is that yesterday at the board of supervisors' meeting, the board adopted the housing element, uh, which is a really important milestone towards our certification with the state. Uh, for those of you who, uh, have been paying attention to this, it's, um, the next critical step will be pursuing the zoning amendments to implement the plan. And, uh, we'll be proceeding with that as one of the highest priorities of our long-range work program. Um, until we, uh, complete those zoning amendments and obtain the state certification, uh, we are current, we remain non-compliant, and there are consequences associated with that. I think the most significant being that, uh, the county is, uh, will not be eligible for certain grounds. And then, secondly, uh, development projects are, will qualify for certain exemptions, um, that, that exemption... Um, that, that exemption's often referred to as the builder's remedy. Uh, we haven't had any builder's remedy projects, uh, to date, and, uh, we think it's highly unlikely that we'll get any, but I will be sure to keep you informed on that point. And that concludes my report for today.
Yes, I do. I do have a question for, uh, the director. So, so what is involved in rezoning? Like, what is the process?
Yeah, so, um, a rezoning project involves relooking at the parameters of existing zoning designations and revising those parameters such that, um, within that zoning designation, private development can achieve a greater density of residential development. So, it's the county's responsibility under state housing law to identify sufficient numbers of properties that can accommodate the development of a number of housing units that have been allocated to the county by the state. That's called our RENA, Regional Housing Allocation. And, um, when we analyzed our existing zoning districts for their capacity to accommodate that allocation, we determined that we don't, uh, currently allow a sufficient amount of density or intensity of residential development to meet the state-assigned allocation. So, we're going to have to change those zoning rules to allow a greater intensity of residential development. And in the process of doing so, we're gonna, of course, have to properly notify, um, interested individuals, and we're going to have to evaluate the environmental consequences of increasing the density of residential development. So we'll have to comply with the California Environmental Quality Act and publish, uh, some sort, some form of environmental report to accompany the zoning amendments. And then, um, where applicable, uh, inform the local advisory committee, if there is such in the area that the zoning amendments are taking place. Uh, give them an opportunity to comment, and then, uh, bring it before the planning commission for your recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. Uh, the Board of Supervisors is the final decision-maker on zoning amendments. So, the action that will be requested of this commission is to recommend that the board both approve the proposed zoning amendments and adopt the relevant environmental review document that accompanies those amendments.
So, so do, do we meet resistance from some of the private, uh, parties?
I anticipate that, um, there will be interested parties that express concern about some of the zoning changes. Um...
But had we contacted them before?
Um, you know, the...
That on our housing element?
Yes. The development of the housing eleve, element involved, uh, public process where, um, the general public as well as specific advisory bodies and stakeholders were notified. Um, if I were to reflect on the comments that we've received on that housing element to date and the associated zoning amendment proposals, I think, um, the greatest, uh, amount of interest and concern that were expressed about some of the zoning changes were on the coast side. Um, and we, uh, have a package of zoning amendments throughout the unincorporated area, uh, that include both the coast side as well as other areas of the county, uh, such as Colma and Broadmoor, and, um, I think, you know, uh, the process in the coastal zone is just by its nature a little bit more, um, cumbersome, if you will, requires more steps. It's gonna require certification by the Coastal Commission. Um, and, you know, we've, um, our housing element and its, um, the associated sites inventory, we prepared to document our ability to accommodate our allocation. Provides a significant buffer, um, so that the proposed zoning amendments not only achieve um, compliance with our allocation, but actually would provide a number of units above that. And so, we, you know, we're gonna have to see how it plays out in terms of how important the, uh, coastal zone updates become, because if we can successfully process the zoning amendments that are outside the coastal zone, uh, those should actually satisfy our allocation. Um... Just meeting the numbers, however, is not the only requirement. Um, this round of, uh, updates to our housing element included some additional requirements, such as a assessment of fair housing, which looks at the distribution of housing at various income levels, with the idea that, you know, we don't want to concentrate lower-income housing in one particular area. You know, it should be spread throughout the county, and so, you know, that, that was an important factor in the development of our plan to date, and it will likely be considered, uh, when we submit the final zoning amendments to the state for certification in terms of whether or not those zoning amendments satisfy the fair housing requirements of current law.
So, so now that we are already, what, a year and a half into this cycle? Um, are... Because that, the eight-year cycle has already started.
Correct.
So, are we being monitored for that?
Absolutely. Um, the, we're required to submit a report to the state on an annual basis of, of regarding our progress of implementing the housing eleme, element. And, um, through, throughout that monitoring process, the state will be assessing whether or not we're producing a number of housing units that put us on target to meet the production requirements for this cycle. And if we reach a point, you know, let's say four years into it, there, there's no specific, you know, date at which, um, the state will evaluate our production rates, but they have the authority to do that throughout the cycle, and they, uh, we've included provisions within our element that if our production rates are such that it does not appear we're gonna meet our target, that we're going to have to do is additional zoning amendments. So, as, you know, we get closer to the midpoint and the end of this cycle, there will be an assessment of, um, our implementation efforts and our production rates, and we may need to take additional action within this cycle to ensure that we will actually meet our production targets.
We have to stay...
We, we need to stay focused. We need to, you know, uh, keep our foot on the gas pedal here with regard to the zoning amendments and implementation of this program so that we can make sufficient progress in meeting this cycle's requirements, and then turn our attention to the next cycle.
Thank you. Thank you for explaining it, Director.
You're very welcome.
No further questions? Um, we're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.